Do you like the voice of God? Take, give me less God, please. I know, I know. No, no, we're gonna work it out. Just less God, please. Testing one, two, testing.
Test, test.
Testing, testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three, we good? All right, Mr. Clerk of you, please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Protem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
I am present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Ready, let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell. Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller-Blakely. District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett. And District Six Alderman, Curtis Pertie. Mister Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order on this Thursday, August the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, "Mid pleasures and palaces, though we may roam. Be it over, so humble, there is no place like home."
Amen.
Welcome back to City Hall.
Yes, sir.
Our invigator will be introduced by Sixth District Alderman, Curtis Pertie.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and it's funny you should say that you're no place like home because I'm gonna talk about it right up here today. For those of you that don't know him, and yes, his name is August Alderman. And he is such an awesome man, he was in public service, he ever made public service, I'll kind of call him Reverend Alderman.
But, I will say, there is no place like home for Reverend August Alderman, and that home is here in Savannah. Reverend August was born in Savannah and grew both in Savannah and Richmond Hill. August owned and operated a hair salon for a decade before he felt the call to ministry at the beginning of COVID-19. August earned a Master of Divinity from the Chicago Theological Seminary, and he calls Memorial, excuse me, August calls Asbury Memorial his church home, same, same as He was ordained in the ministry of Word and Sacrament by Asbury Memorial and became Associate Minister at Asbury Memorial this past June, so what a blessing we've had there. August served as clinic, clinic, I can never say his word right. Clinical, there we go, clinical. Pastoral education with Hospice Savannah and Bereavement Services. He loves his city and hopes to serve all of Savannah in pastoral care through outreach, through outreach ministries of Asbury Memorial Church, and we are blessed to have him here today, ladies and gentlemen, Reverend August Alderman.
Thank you, Curtis. It is my honor, I am excited to be here with you all today, thank you. I come to you to offer you a prayer as a child of God and a hopeful follower of Jesus. May we pray together. God who responds to many names, God who gathers more and more and still more to the table, your presence is everywhere, across places of worship and cultures. Spirit of peace, spirit of peace in all the ways we understand, divine one. Often, when we recognize you, you look like love. Let this love rest on every individual here, and let them know they are each a reflection of wonder, of creation, of mystery, of hope. Let love inspire us to listen before we speak, to seek understanding and offer support, not to exert power over, but to have power with. Let it be a love that does not oppress. Let it be the restorative love that works for justice and dignity for each. Help us to experience grace, not just in our sameness, but in our differences, for that is where we can find. May our faith, our minds, our experiences, and our morals cause us to persevere with hope, to think critically, and to honor one another. In fact, to treat each other how we wish to be. Each other to live as we ourselves wish to live, and to love and care for ourselves so that we can better love and care for one another. Move us to care most especially for the vulnerable ones, and center our thoughts, actions, and intentions in unity, in the making of the beloved community, to find the harmony between us that is within each of us. Guide us in caring for this wonderful city that we love, so that our streets will echo with peace, the squares will draw circles wide, our homes will bloom with kindness, our decisions be made with peace, seeking justice as we travel together the path. Transforming despair into hope, hunger into nourishment, scarcity into abundance, displacement into a welcoming home, disease into health, and loneliness into community. In love and unity, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, and let us now honor our country. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Reverend, we appreciate you being here with us today. We appreciate you gracing our meeting, and we appreciate all you do for our faith community. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for us, again, we're excited to be back in this place, we are particularly happy to see Alderwoman Alicia Miller-Blakely, and we continue to send out our prayers and condolences to you during this very difficult time for you and your families. Thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready, sir?
Let's proceed.
All right. I would like to make a motion for the first and second items on our agenda. I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Given that this is a very special meeting, and there are very many people here to speak on two particular agenda items, I would like humbly request the City Council prioritize Items Number Twenty-four and Twenty-five for the public hearing, whether it be a vote, and Item Number Seventeen involving the Highlands to the front of the agenda.
That is, this is for the approval, the participation is of Chair of the, Chair of the, Chair of the Meeting. We'll, we'll take, we'll move along as fast as we can. So the motion is here, a second for her motion. Properly moved, a second in all, in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for Item Number Two, for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at two o'clock PM. Second?
And properly moved, a second that we approved. Item Number Three is the welcome and the blessing of our restored City Council chambers. For us, again, this has been a, a labor of, of work and a labor of love, a labor of a gift back to our community, and so, Mister Manager, we could conduct the blessing first or last, whatever works best for you?
Last.
Okay. Whatever works best for you.
Thank you, I'm gonna have Luciana Spraker come with me here, who's our archivist and historian, and been the team leader for this. Welcome home, Council. It's been several months since we've been back in this chamber, and you'll notice that while nothing has changed, everything is brighter and restored. This room has been the center of our government for a hundred and nineteen years. City Hall was designed by Hyman W. Whitcover and completed in nineteen oh six. It's a symbol of the modern and progressive spirit embraced by the city of Savannah at the turn of the twentieth century. City Hall Restoration Project is the first major restoration of City Hall's interior spaces, its first in a hundred and nineteen years. Our restoration of this space honors the initial community investment that, that this was the people's house, and a building for a century to come, which were the words of the day in nineteen oh six when this building was opened. The first two phases of this restoration project have focused on this council chamber, as well as the first-floor archives and history room, entrance lobby, welcome and security center, the first-floor rotunda and stairwell, and for those who had only come in the front door to be greeted by security and didn't look around at the beautiful tile mosaic lobby, please do on your way out of the building. As you may have noticed, the work has included restoration of the original marble, mosaics, penny tile, woodwork, plaster, furniture, lighting, and hardware. The guiding ethos of this restoration project was to honor the architectural integrity of these spaces while also creating a cutting-edge, modern government space, improving our efficiency, security, and public access. Alongside the restoration, we have upgraded our technology, as you noticed today, allowing us to function as a modern government in a historic space. And we have to do more. The final two phases of the City Hall Restoration Project focus on the remaining interior of City Hall and exterior repairs to include window replacements. I want to take just a few moments to recognize some key staff members of our project team who made this incredible restoration happen. Let me start by thanking our entire Capital Projects team, led by our Senior Director, Kristi Lawrence, and especially our Project Manager Byron Stiles, so please give Kristi and Byron a round of applause. Our Facility Maintenance Team had to keep this building clean because we were still working in it, led by Richard Gerbezey. I want to specifically recognize Pam Laws, who kept all of our City Hall staff informed during the project, she did an amazing job, thank you, Pam. And then finally, I want to give thanks and praise to Luciana Spraker, our Archives and History Officer, who ensured this project preserved City Hall's history, so thank you so much. We didn't do it alone, we have amazing partners in this work, I want to thank Ethos Preservation and Architectural Collaborative who provided the design team, ensuring the project respected City Hall's historical features while bringing us up-to-date to function as a modern government. Specifically, I want to recognize Preservationist Rebecca Finwick and Kirsten Connor, Architect Joe Smith, and Designer Malin Erman for their great work, so please a round of applause for those amazing craftsmen. I want to also thank Garbit Construction, who executed the design team's plans flawlessly. Thank you to Project Manager Hunter McCall and Project Superintendent Jose Gutierrez. A special thank to Raib Moore, who served as Project Superintendent through Phases One and Two, before Governor Kemp borrowed him for some work on the Governor's Mansion. Preservation, who focused on preserving this beautiful woodwork, Greg Jacobs and his team did an incredible job highlighting the amazing craftsmanship of this beautiful building, and they're all here with us today, so please give them a round of applause. Admire their amazing craftsmanship because it truly, truly is amazing, and with that, Mister Mayor, I'd like to, to turn it over to you for, I know, a special thanks as well.
Thank you, again, this is a great day for us. A day that has taken a long time to get here, we're glad that it's here, but the work continues. It's been about a year since Luciana and Byron kicked us out, and I will tell you, I'm sick of Luciana and Byron. Every, I know, every single day, this was an active construction site, we continue to work in here, many of us, the mayor's team, city manager's team, the attorneys, the clerks, continuing to, to do work in here, we've heard every noise that could be heard, we've smelled every smell that could be smelled, we've seen it all, we've seen the bare bones of this building, and we are so glad that the citizens of Savannah have the opportunity to be returned to their house. And so for us, we were very excited as well that we did not miss a beat, because we have friends down the road that were allowing us to use their facilities for the last several months, and they've been so kind to us. We had thirty-eight public meetings in the Savannah-Chatham Board of Education's two Laura Street Complex, and that was at no tax, no charge to the taxpayers, and that's where we clap. No, no, no taxes. No, we clap a little bit more than that, we didn't have to pay for it. I, I don't see President Moss. Well, oh, well, that's, oh, you're back in the back now, you're not, come on up here, sir, if you would. Alderman Leggett? Again, we want to thank you, Mister Moss, certainly to Dr. Denise Watts and the entire, to the entire Board of Education, Denise Grabowski, Dr. Dion Hoskins-Brown, Cornelia Hall, Sean Catchmar, Paul Smith, Dr. David Bringman, Stephanie Campbell, Dr. Tanya Howard-Hall, for the opportunity to be in your space, and certainly, the professionalism of your team, Stacy Jennings, Kurt Hediger, Michael Hollis, and then Ken Slats that we've loaned to you. We appreciate that, and we want to give you all this opportunity to recognize what you all have done for us, and I'll, I'll show everyone to commemorate not only our work, but our friendship, and ladies and gentlemen, governments can work together, and we do, and we serve the same folk. So I think, did I see, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have board members here?
Yes, we do.
Y'all come on up. Welcome to our house. President Moss, you want to, you want to say something, you come around here. Yeah, we, we have a new configuration now, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Now, one thing we always say is, education's everybody's business, and we are thrilled that you guys are finally out of our building. No. No, but, Bob, thank you for the encouraging words, thank you, Mayor, that you have set education as a priority, that, that means a lot. We have two of our board members here today, Denise Grabowski and Paul Smith. Thank you so much, and we may be coming to you for use of your building, because we've got a big renovation coming up, so, thank you very much.
You have friends over here?
Yes, we do, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Wow.
We'll present this to you, and we hope that, and maybe after your new renovation, this can be somewhere really nice.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, I love this.
We would need to come around, we haven't worked that part out, let's go around.
While they're coming to take pictures, I'd like to invite Luciana up to talk a little bit about the projects, community partners, and the donors to this project.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, City Manager and guests. I am so happy to welcome you all back to City Hall, a place I feel very privileged to get to work in every day, and as I make my comments, I'd like to ask a few special guests to join me up here at the railing. So if the few, following people will please come up, Glenda Anderson, William Mock, Mickey Daniel, Swan Siler, and other members of Friends of City Hall are here in the room with me, and Amiri Ferris, if you'll come on up to the railing, please. So most of you have been aware of this project since construction started last year, but projects of this magnitude take much longer to happen. I usually say the City Hall Restoration Project started in two thousand sixteen at a City Council meeting when Daniel Carey, Historic Savannah Foundation CEO at the time, was sitting next to me, and we were looking at the beat-up parquet tree floor and damaged plaster ceiling, and the old curtains you may remember that you were afraid to touch, and noticing that while all the original bones of the chamber were still here, things were pretty worn out, and we were worried that if we didn't take action soon, we might be past a point of no return. And from there, the City and Historic Savannah Foundation hatched a plan to partner on a National Trust grant to do a building conditions assessment, which resulted in the City Hall Restoration Plan, which was a guiding document that secured the SPOSS funding. So, they couldn't be with us here today, but I want to thank Historic Savannah Foundation for helping us, to set us on the right foot to get here today. But I really want to go back before two thousand sixteen, because we wouldn't have been given the green light to do that grant in the first place if there hadn't been a shift in the appreciation of City Hall as not just a government office building, but a significant historic site, if it wasn't for Glenda Anderson, my predecessor. Glenda started the historic tours of City Hall, spearheaded the centennial anniversary in two thousand and six, and originated the idea of restoring the archive's first-floor space into an interpretive space. She even got a CIP, a project approved for it, before recession, the recession tanked that funding, so I want to thank her for starting that shift in city culture. Once we did get into this restoration project, we've had some really lovely community partners and donors helping us along the way. Also not able to be here today, I want to recognize Kathy and Philip Solomon, Solomons, the Solomons are descendants of Mayor Herman Myers, whose portrait hangs on the south wall of this chamber. Mayor Myers was Chair of the City Hall Building Committee, his portrait was hung in this room on January, in January in nineteen oh six, in the first meeting held in this room, and after a hundred and nineteen years, it needed some major conservation work. The Solomons funded that painting's conservation so it could happen at the same time as the building's restoration. When City Hall opened in nineteen oh six, electricity was still very modern and exciting, and not every home and office in Savannah had it. The city could not afford for the entire building to be electric, so only the public spaces, like the rotunda walking in and this chamber, were outfitted with electric fixtures. Guests coming to the opening reception in nineteen oh six were wowed, they called this room a chamber of brilliance, and Savannah Electric and Power Company was our electricity supplier at the time.
Yay.
We were thrilled when Georgia Power, which absorbs Savannah Electric, donated fifty thousand dollars to help restore all of our beautiful original brass electric fixtures. So I want to recognize William Mock, Southeast Region Executive, Mickey Daniel, Daniel, Savannah-Chatham GPC Area Manager, and Swan Siler, recently retired from Georgia Power, for helping to facilitate that donation. You might notice some brand-new things hanging in this room, we have two original pieces of art on loan from local artist Amiri Ferris. I reached out to Amiri, asking to borrow some works to hang for our opening, and after visiting the building, he was inspired to create Justice in Motion and Justice Awakened, which draw from the symbolism of our city seal, and utilize historical documents, not originals, I was actually asked that question, but reproductions, from our own archival collections. I encourage you to pick up an exhibit brochure that we have in the hallway that where you can read more about the works and, and Amiri, and they really add a really exciting new dimension to this room, and I want to thank him for bringing that vibrancy into this space. And I also want to announce that we, there's a new, brand-new Friends of City Hall group that is forming, we have a few members of the new board here, we have Robin Williams, Jenny McCord, Sabrina Cox, Mary the Stone, I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody, and they're, they are getting formed, their purpose is to advocate for City Hall's importance, educate the public about City Hall's history, assist with outside fundraising to support the preservation and restoration of City Hall well into the future, and ensure City Hall remains owned by the public as a public access and is an open and accessible to the public. The Friends will be launching their membership campaign as we near the one hundred and twenty, twentieth anniversary of City Hall in two thousand twenty-six, and we look forward to working with them and the larger Savannah community. And with that, I want to mention that today's just a little taste of the work that we've been doing to preserve our City Hall for our citizens, and that there is more to come. And we wanted to get you all back to work in the building and give you an opportunity to inspect Phases One and Two, but of course, we're still finishing up the interior, and we plan to celebrate our one hundred and twentieth City Hall birthday next year. That will be a celebration not only of the completion of the interior project, but a celebration of this fine civic building and the history it has witnessed over one hundred and twenty years, so stay tuned for that. We have a few items that Megan from my office is going to help pass out, for all of our partners up and donors up here, I want to give a great big thank you with a small token of thanks, we have a print of a watercolor by a City Hall local artist Brenda Brown, that's from our collections. Megan is passing out a very special City Hall cookie that is almost too pretty to eat, there's going to be, those are on the table outside for our guests and the audience to pick out as they leave, where you can also find the brochure about Amiri's work. So I want to thank you all for coming back to City Hall, we are really happy to welcome you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, and again, for us, this is the culmination of a project, not only it took a long time, it also took a lot of money, and continues to do so. The SPOSS dollar works, the special local option sales tax, the extra penny that we continue to pay helped make this happen, and so not only do we thank our residents, we also thank our visitors that helped to pay to make this happen. For us, we always want to do the right things the right way, and so I'm going to ask Bishop Thomas J. Seals, the pastor of the Connaught's Temple Baptist Church, and one of our revered police chaplains, to offer a dedicatory prayer for our new chambers, and we would all please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we gather in gratitude, and in hope, and in great expectation, on this day as we dedicate these chambers unto you. We thank you for the privilege of living, working, and serving in this beautiful city of Savannah. We ask your blessing upon these council chambers. May they be more than walls and seats, but a living conduit for the success, advancement, and the well-being of our community. Grant that every decision made here will be guided by wisdom, justice, and compassion. Let these chambers be a place where equality and inclusion are not just words, but lived value for every residence in every neighborhood of every background. May unity be the spirit that fills this room, and vision that compasses, that directs its work. Help those who lead here to seek the common good, to honor the dignity of every person, and to keep in mind the generations yet to come. May the work here done ensure that our children and our children's children will find Savannah to be a place where they can plant their roots, grow strong, and thrive. Lord, we ask, bless this chamber, O God, that it may stand as a beacon of hope, a space of courageous dialogue, and a workshop for building a city where we all may flourish. We dedicate this We dedicate this place, this pace, and this service of the people to you, to the good of the whole community, trusting that with your guidance, the work begun here will echo throughout all generations. And we ask it all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all so much, and you may be seated. Our community continues to grow. Something that was struck upon me, and I wanted to make sure that we lift it, when this building was open, individuals that looked like me could not be in this building, much less be mayor of this city. Nor could people who looked like you, women, couldn't be in here either. And you look around now, and you see Savannah being represented, and so that just shows us the great country we live in, and certainly the great city that we are blessed to be a part of. So thank you all so much. I'm also blessed today to have with us the great folks of our Muslim community, and I'm going to ask them to come up as we celebrate the 50th anniversary of Majid Jihad here in Savannah. Brother Ibrahim, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on closer. I don't bite. Lester Johnson around? Okay, there. Come on up here, Lester. And I will take the privilege to greet you in the words of peace, Assalamu Alaykum.
Wa alaikum.
The City of Savannah proclamation reads, "Whereas there is no written documentation as to the exact date that Al-islam began in Savannah, Georgia. However, through African oral tradition, which is a part of the African-American tradition in Savannah, Georgia, and throughout the southern states, it is believed that Al-islam began in 1968 with local citizens establishing an affiliate of the Nation of Islam, a religious organization established in the 1930s by the Honorable Elijah Muhammad, a former resident of Sandersville, Georgia, who migrated to Detroit, Michigan. And whereas the early efforts of the Nation of Islam began as Muhammad's Temple of Islam in the members' homes, and then later in rented facilities on Barnet Street under the leadership of Ministers Charles X. Cusper, Carton X. Woods, Samuel II. Franklin, and Grant X. Ellison between 1968 and 1974. And whereas during the early 1970s, the Nation of Islam experienced exponential growth nationwide and in Savannah, Georgia, several Savanians joined the Nation of Islam such as Vernon Williams, Ezekiel Walker, Ronald Flag, Joseph Turner, Michael Thomas, Marvin Castle, Reginald Toby, Isaac R. Williams, John B. Collier, and many others. And whereas in 1974, Muhammad's Temple of Islam experienced a historic relocation effort when it purchased a Victorian-era property at 11—sorry, 117 East 34th Street for the financial donations of a few members, along with numerous small donations by many other members. Also in 1974, the members of Muhammad's Temple of Islam operated two local businesses: Steak and Take at 1015 West 50th Street and Shabazz Restaurant at 619 Harmon Street. And whereas on November 30, 1976, during a special call meeting, Majid Fahim Ali, formerly known as Marvin Castle, was elected to serve as Imam of Majid Jihad during his 40-year tenure as Imam of Majid Jihad until his untimely death on February 27, 2016. Imam Majid Fahim Ali established a recognized presence of Muslims in Savannah, Georgia, with a local prison ministry, a statewide prison ministry, chaplain services at the Chatham County Detention Center, and numerous other exceptional efforts, too many to list. After the death of this great religious leader and native son of Savannah, Georgia, in 2016, former Assistant Imam Ibrahim Abdul Malik was elected to serve as Imam of Majid Jihad. He has contributed, continued the exemplary efforts of Majid F. Ali in making Al-islam and Majid Jihad vibrant and contributing members of the Savannah, Georgia religious community. And whereas Majid Jihad has served as a beacon of guidance and unity and outreach, serving not only as a place of worship, but also as a center of education, charity, and community empowerment. And now therefore, I, V. R. Johnson, the second Mayor of the City of Savannah, Georgia, do hereby celebrate 50-plus years of Al-islam in Savannah, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring this remarkable legacy of faith, service, and unity that has enriched our city for more than five decades and witness wherever I've here to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Savannah to be a thing. Ladies and gentlemen, you can be 100% Muslim and 100% Savanian at the same time. And so ladies and gentlemen, these are our brothers, our sisters, our neighbors, our friends. Congratulations. [applause] Do you want to say something, sir?
Greetings, dear people. I am honored to be in this position that I am today, and standing right here right now, on behalf of my fellow congregants, but more specifically, on behalf of the support and the respect that we have received from this hallowed chamber, from the City of Savannah, from the mayor's office, et cetera. As was indicated in the proclamation, our Imam Majid Ali led the community. He moored the community for over 40 years, and he established a stellar reputation for us as a community. My job, having been asked to represent us after his passing, was not to mess anything up. So I say this in all humbleness, that we will continue to honor his legacy. We will also continue to honor and cherish the relationship that we have with the City of Savannah, and I'm going to do my level best to not mess anything up. Peace be with you. Assalamu alaykum.
Wa alaikum. Thank you so much. Come on. So, and we thank you so much. They are valued members of our faith community, and certainly served well with us during COVID, as we made the courageous decision to ask our faith communities not to meet in person. We believe that saved lives, and we want to thank you all so much for that. This gentleman standing next to me is someone that is very known to us. He is a member of Team Savannah, a member of the mosque, Lester B. Johnson III, who recently celebrated 50 years being married to the same person.
Hey, Linda and everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Believe it or not, in December of this year, I would have served—well, let me rephrase that—I would have been allowed, at your pleasure, to serve as one of your Assistant City Attorneys for 43 years. And it has been a pleasure to get to know everyone from Mayor Resakis to Van, and all of our city council members from Leo Center, down to Estella Shabazz and Linda, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, over those years. I would like to take a little personal privilege and ask if one of our members can come up and just briefly tell you all about what we are going to plan on August 23rd. If any of you have the time—it's a Saturday, it's at 6:00 PM—but if you can come, we would welcome everybody to come and celebrate 50-plus years of being here in the lovely and great city of Savannah. So I'm going to ask, Sakina, you want to come up?
No, Abdul's going to do it.
Abdul's going to do it, okay. Abdul Elamin is going to come up. He's our chairperson. And again, thank you all for everything you have done for us over the years.
Thank you all for having us. I tried to draft one of our women, but they backed out. I'm the chairman of the committee, and it was an honor for me to serve in this particular capacity. From our 50 years of practicing Al-islam in Savannah, I know many of you—we would like to invite you all to come out and worship with us, or invite us to come out and worship with you all. We continue to strive to have a harmonious relationship with everybody in the community, and we love Savannah. Thank you.
I would like to ask Imam or Assistant Attorney or Brother to—I know that there is a dinner that I've been invited to, and I would surely would love the public to come and join me as we continue to celebrate the 50 years of Islam from the Masjid here in Savannah. So if someone could tell us more about that event, that would be great.
Don't rush now.
I'm trying to draft one of the names, but they're being shy.
Come on, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, on the 23rd of this month, at the Bostick Center, that's adjacent to St. James on East Broad Street, we are having the commemoration, our anniversary, the 50th anniversary. We will have some speakers, some guests, some—I think the mayor's going to be here, former mayor, Chatham County Councilman, esteemed Ms. Shabazz. We will have some light music, nice food, no dancing and jiggling. [laughter] Got some nice, comfortable music and food, and a joyous occasion for us to celebrate. And for those of you all who are able to, you can get in touch with us, and we would love to have you share this moment with us. And again, we thank you all. We thank the mayor, we thank the city for everything you do in respecting us as we try to worship as all faith communities do here in Savannah.
And how do we get in contact with you?
We have a website. Lynn has established the website, and so I'm a little challenged in that area. So here she is.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm actually going to give my number out publicly. That's the best way. And you reach me, I will send you a link where you can register for the tickets. Or you can get it on our website, masjidjihad.com. There is a link there. I'm happy to assist persons individually. Is it okay to give my number?
You want to, but they'll call you, officer.
Well, I'm in charge of tickets and ads, so they put me in charge of that. We need to get that handled. So my number is 912-596-1628. Thank you so much. We'd love to have you join us.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. We look forward to many, many more years to come. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're also very glad to have with us—when someone gives you $971,935 to help us pay for things that our taxpayers don't have to pay for, we like that. So we're going to ask the Savannah College of Art Design to come up, Mr. Darryl Naylor Johnson, Vice President.
Don't laugh how big my notes are. Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson, Mayor Pro Tim Alderman, Dr. Estelle Edward Shabazz, members of City Council, and Mr. City Manager. As part of SCAD's ongoing dedication to strengthening its hometown communities, this year, the university has awarded nearly $2 million in grant funding to nonprofits in Savannah and Atlanta. These grants focus on critical community needs in areas of food, shelter, safety, and education. Today, through the SCAD-Serve Community Fund, we are formally gifting nearly $1 million to the City of Savannah. Yeah, you can clap for that. The funds will be used to enhance public safety measures, which will benefit local residents, visitors to our beautiful city, and our students. The City of Savannah was one of four nonprofits selected this year from 176 applications. The SCAD-Serve philanthropic initiative underscores our 46-year legacy of giving and civic engagement at SCAD. During the past school year, SCAD-Serve partnered with more Savannah-based nonprofits than ever before. Our talented students work with organizations like Second Harvest, Union Mission, Frank Allen Boys and Girls Club, and the public school system to help them reach more people and offer more services. And we did it all for free. The value of those dollars—over $2 million contribution to those organizations that we worked with this past year. When our students move out of the dorms in May, we ask them to donate items they can't travel home with. This year, they donate new or gently-used art supplies, over 50,000 pounds of furniture, small appliances, and non-perishable food, which went to Goodwill and Salvation Army, and art supplies donated to local art teachers throughout Chatham County. So Savannah is our home. That includes 2,000 of my colleagues, and actually, today, we had several of my colleagues in the Friends of City Hall here today, and the artwork by Amiri Ferris is also a SCAD alum and my former student. So we have thousands of SCAD alumni and students, and we care deeply about the neighbors we share this city with. Through SCAD-Serve, we support projects that reflect our mission, vision, and values, helping to build a vibrant, inclusive Savannah where creativity and innovation flourish for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. [applause] I asked Darryl, I said, "Where the check?" No, we want the check now. Ladies and gentlemen, when someone gives you $971,935, you say, "Thank you." So we are grateful to the Savannah College of Art Design for partnering with us in ways that we want to be partnered with, so we appreciate that. Mr. Manager, you have anything you want to ask?
Yes, sir. Really thankful for SCAD and SCAD-Serve. Again, a million dollars going towards our public safety initiatives. SCAD's long been a partner with the City of Savannah on public safety, and this is a big, big step and an increase in that partnership, and we can't be more thankful for SCAD-Serve and for our partnership, not only in public safety, but for everything that they endeavor to do with us in the City of Savannah. I'd like to ask Chief Gunther and Assistant Chief Gavin to talk a little bit about what that investment is going to touch for our citizens and public safety.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City Manager.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief Gunther. I, along with the members of the Savannah Police Department, want to thank SCAD for selecting us to receive the SCAD-Serves Community Fund. We are extremely thankful for their partnership in keeping Savannah safe. The SCAD-Serves Community Fund will assist SPD to not only invest, but to also leverage technology to keep our community safe. And I'll allow Assistant Chief Gavin to go over some specifics.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Assistant Chief Gavin. With this extraordinary gift, we're able to expand our camera systems by buying the city 70 more cameras that can be used in neighborhoods throughout the city where we haven't had a lot of that camera coverage, and we're hoping to keep that expansion moving. This will also allow us to buy up to 50 new flock cameras, which have been probably one of the biggest pieces of technology that assist us in crime fighting throughout the last several years. On top of that, we knew there was—even though everybody has a cell phone—we're looking at some call boxes that have one that—you know, for some of these areas that not everybody might be able to get to a cell phone, or something's wrong, someone has a medical emergency. We're hoping that 12 call boxes that will spread throughout the city will allow people to have a place where they can—in an emergent situation—can get ahold of 911 and the police department quickly. We also are looking at other pieces of technology to enhance public safety and continue to protect. and continue to leverage, um, technology to, to, to help us stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and we, again, we are very, very appreciative. Um, you know, people say what they wanna say. Um, I say that it was nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Um, you call it what you wanna call it, we call it a gift, we say "thank you," and we are very, very appreciative, and I'll come by and pick up the check this afternoon. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Manager. And then finally, uh, this was really important to me, um, I'm gonna ask the participants of our 2025 Path Forward program to come forward. I, I am so proud of these young men. Um, when we talk about how and the responsibility of a village to be able to create strong, uh, sustainable young men, um, they don't learn it by osmosis. Um, they learn it by people taking the time, as we all had people and mentors in our lives to help us be and stay on the right path. I've been engaged with these young men, um, throughout the summer, uh, and they have committed, uh, to, to live a life that is gun-free. Um, they have big dreams, and I submit to you that the world better look out, um, because these young men are going to positively impact not only this city, but this nation. And so, they are here, I wanted them to come, um, I love how they look. I used to have hair like that, too. As I told them, they find it hard to believe. Uh, but let's welcome our graduates of our 2025 Path Forward program.
Uh, Jimmy Johnson, the Senior Director of the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Again, we wanna send a thank you from our office to the mayor, City Council, our City Management Office as well. Again, an investment in this program is not only an investment into these young men's lives, but we believe it's an investment into the city of Savannah, because these are our future, uh, leaders of the city. And on behalf of our office and our Path Forward graduates, we wanna present to you, Mayor, and the City Council, a plaque, a token of appreciation from our 2025 cohort, and it'll be presented by our class leader. Uh, he won the Leadership Award, uh, so he will present to the mayor, uh, this token of appreciation. And I'll read it on behalf of the Path Forward cohort, it says, "The 2025 cohort, uh, Path Forward proudly presents this award to the city of Savannah, Mayor and City Council in appreciation for the growth and development opportunities provided," and it has the list of the graduates as well.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Rashawn King, I'm seventeen. My future plan is to go to the Navy. If I don't go to the Navy, if I'm the other one, um, go to trade, get a trade, go to Savannah Tech and get a trade for underwater welding.
Yeah.
Hey, how y'all doing today? Uh, my name is Octavia Sloan, I'm nineteen. Um, I plan to go to college for culinary arts, but if that doesn't work out, then I just plan to go to college still to pursue a different career, different trade, things like that.
Yeah, come on.
Um, I'm Aaron Johnson, I am eighteen, and I am working on recruiting to be a Marine. Okay.
Yeah.
And right now, I am currently working with Mr. Wright, and we're doing the play Saturday called Checkmate. I play Jaron Phillips, and we're sold out.
Where's the play?
My name is Gerard Gardner, and I'm nineteen, and I want my own landscape and business.
How y'all doing? My name is Kaden Carter, eighteen, class of twenty-twenty-six, go to Savannah Tech, get a trade and H-bye.
Come on now. Mayor Johnson, we are missing a young man.
I, I know, I know, we, we, we're just dealing, well, we're, we're addressing an issue, though. We, we, we're okay. We're okay, yeah, a little shy, they said, so.
He, he coming.
He coming.
He right there, yeah. Don't give up on him.
I'm seventeen, and my name, I'm Cornelius, and, and I'm doing the trade for, I'm construction.
Yeah.
Um, but before we get to the, the amazing team, um, that helped make this happen, um, I spent a lot of time this week, considerable time, on national news talking about, um, what was happening in Washington DC, um, regarding President Trump and the, um, National Guard. Um, we had the opportunity to highlight the decreases in crime across the country, including, um, places like Savannah. And I was asked, "How, uh, is Savannah doing it?" And I would tell you, we do it by great policing, but we also do it by great prevention. Uh, preventing individuals from making bad choices. And so I thank our City Manager Jay Melder, who brought the Ones Office concept for us, to have any young, our Assistant City Manager, who helped to, to lead and shepherd this. Uh, we have to spend as much time preventing it in the forefront, and I thank you, Council, um, because the fact is, it's always easy to say, "Hire more police." No, we want young men to live their best lives. And so, thank you all for investing and believing in Ones. Uh, Doc Johnson, if you would introduce your team.
I have an amazing team, by the way, and great leadership, but I let them introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Isaac Felton, Senior Program Coordinator with the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement.
Tim Wright, Youth Empowerment Specialist.
Marco George, Youth Empowerment Specialist.
Kaylee Hurd, Program Coordinator.
Good afternoon, Crystal Bridges, Youth Empowerment Specialist.
Good afternoon, Laurel White, Administrative Assistant.
They have heard it all, they have seen it all. Uh, and I, I, again, let's give a big round of applause for the work, um, that they do. Let's come, take a quick picture, just, okay. Mr. Manager, Madam Assistant, y'all come into the picture. You're gonna see great things from these young men. Oh, come on, 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 come on. All right, we're good. All right.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, one, two, three. Hold the post, please. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Be great, be great. We're gonna move as best and fast as we can. Again, we know everyone's time is valuable. Um, so I'm gonna do some things that hopefully expedite our agenda. Uh, so I wanna move first to the, to the airport, uh, items, item number thirty-nine through forty-eight. Yes.
I would like to make a motion for, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the airport, Savannah Airport Commission Items Number Thirty-nine through Forty-eight.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved in second, that we approve items number thirty-nine, approval of a two-year official airport partnership with the Hilton Head Lufted Chamber of Commerce for the Kingdom Cup in the amount of six-hundred-thousand dollars. Item number forty, executing a professional service agreement with Stephen Baldwin and Associates of, in the amount of sixty-six-thousand dollars. Forty-one, approval to remit the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five workers' compensation premium pa- balance to Sterling Seacrest Pritchard in the amount of fifty-three-thousand-seventeen dollars. Item number forty-two, approval to procure two mobile baggage X-ray units from Point Security in the amount of sixty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Item number forty-three, approval to renew the DO Me software, uh, subscription from Nexus Nexus Risk Solutions Group uh, in the amount of, of thirty-four-thousand-seventy-three dollars. Uh, item number forty-four, approval, uh, to execute a contract with Sen Coast Restoration and Waterproofing LLC for to rehabilitate Runaway Intersection and Terminal Apron Project in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-seven dollars. Item number forty-five, approval to award a contract, uh, to, uh, insulated roofing contractors for the restoration of five hangers in the amount of two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Item number forty-six, approval to ratify the acceptance of the bipartisan infrastructure law, airport infrastructure grant offer uh, from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of four-million-one-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-five dollars. Item number forty-seven, approval to ratify the acceptance of the bipartisan infrastructure law, airport infrastructure grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-six dollars. And item number forty-eight, to, uh, ratify the acceptance of a grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of seven-hundred-sixty-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-four dollars. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, get back to the greatest airport in the world. Moving on to forty-nine, uh, this is a motion to authorize City Manager to approve a resolution for the Chatham-Savannah Authority for the Homeless to receive a one-million-eight-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-seven-thousand Savannah Affordable Housing Fund Loan and a three-million-one-hundred-five-thousand-four-hundred-fifteen-dollar HUD Home ARP Grant for the acquisition of thirty-nine cottages, a caretaker house, and a resident service building located at Dundee College, sixty-five Dundee Street, for the permanent financing and construction of twelve tiny homes located at the Cove at Dundee, seventy-five Dundee Street, Savannah, Chatham County, Georgia. This is big news, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve as part of the agenda, please. Second.
Then properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, does anyone have any issues with, uh, items number fifty, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there are no pullouts, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agreements for items on our agenda, number fifty through fifty-five.
Second emotion.
And properly moved in second, all, uh, fifty is approval of development limited use agreement between, uh, the city of Savannah and Trustees Garden Club for the Shade Garden. Fifty-two is the authorized City Manager to execute a development agreement with CHSA Development Incorporated for the public infrastructure improvements to support an affordable housing development located in nine-sixteen Martha King Junior Boulevard and adjacent parks. Item number fifty-three is approval of water and sewer agreement at the nine-twelve Savannah LLC for Plant Street Apartments. Item number fifty-four is authorized City Manager to execute an amended agreement with Forsyth Commons to build a garage at the corner of Whittaker and Park Avenue, and item number fifty-five is approval of a water and sewer agreement, um, with Rod Krishna Properties for the Spencer Condonat Interest Road. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anybody have any issues with fifty-six through sixty?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, we're talking about miscellaneous items, sir?
Uh, real estate items.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion for the approval under our real estate items, number fifty-six through fifty through sixty.
Second.
And properly moved in second, that we authorize City Manager to execute a development agreement with Road Design and Build LLC, and authorization to expend up to fifty thousand dollars in cumulative cost and fees. Fifty-seven, authorized City Manager to approve an easement donation from the Georgia Port Authority for Sewer Forest Main located on Portion of seven-ninety Lewisville Road. Fifty-eight, authorized City Manager to approve the purchase of easements and land to facilitate a Southwest Quadrant Sewer Project. Fifty-nine, authorizes City Manager to purchase, approve the purchase of an easement to facilitate a water main, uh, extension along Dawes Avenue. And sixty, to authorize City Manager to execute the Second Amendment with fans-first entertainment for the use of Grayson Stadium. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any issues between sixty and sixty-three?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to mo- make a motion for the approval of items number sixty-one through sixty-three.
Second emotion.
And properly moved in second, that we approve a major subdivision at Hope and Track Seven, Phase One A. Uh, sixty-two is approval of a major subdivision, Beacon Point at New Hampstead, Phase One A. Uh, item number sixty-three, approval of a major subdivision, Aspire at New Hampstead, Phase Two. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a, there's, there's a method to my manners, just hang with me just one minute. Um, we do need to accept that grant of the SCAD Serve of nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go back, we'll get back to settlements. Um, you had, you had your settlements? All right, you have a settlement?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and do the settlement. We're just clearing the agenda, that's all we're doing.
I'd like to make a motion to move the, to authorize the City Attorney's Office to resolve a claim for Holly Pace in the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
And properly moved in second, that we authorize City Attorney to resolve the claim of Holly Pace for ninety thousand dollars. Uh, you've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's move to, uh, alcohol license hearings. Uh, if there are no pullouts, we will take the ones where there are no pullouts, we'll go ahead and address those, or any pullouts. Okay, that being said, uh, this is an open hearing for these items. Item of number seven is the approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Anthony Des- Desabini, uh, for Fish Bar, a restaurant located at twenty-two eighteen Bull Street, between East Thirty-eighth and East Thirty-ninth in Alderman District Two. Item number eight is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales, sales to Robert Young for the Darling Oyster Bar, a restaurant located in twenty-seven Montgomery Street, uh, located between West Saint Julian and West Congress Streets in Alderman District Two. Item number nine is approval of a Class A wine and cater alcohol license to Daniel Lee for Savannah Wine Institute, a specialty shop located at six-oh-two East Henry Street. Item number ten is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Joshua Sexton for the Sexton Pub and Provisions, a restaurant located in seven West Forty-third Street, between Whittaker and Bull Streets in Alderman District Two. This is a public hearing that I declare open. Does anyone have anything against any of these licenses? Going once, going twice, speak now, forever hold thy peace.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ask that we close the hearing.
Second emotion.
Properly moved in second, that we close this hearings, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion passes. Item number seven is, uh, Fish Bar Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Max, that we accept the Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Anthony DeBriesini for the Fish Bar District.
Properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eight, Alderman Leggett, this is, uh, the Darling Oyster Bar.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Robert Young for the Darling Oyster Bar, District Two.
Properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number nine, this is, um, the Savannah Wine Institute, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, we ask that we approve the Class A wine caterers license, alcohol license to Da- Danya Lee for Savannah Wine Institute, a specialty shop located at six-oh-two East Henry Street.
Second.
And properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number ten is for, uh, the Sexton Pub and Provisions, Alderman Leggett.
Ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Joshua Sexton for the Sexton Pub and Provisions Restaurant in District Two.
Second.
And properly moved in second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye. And probably move to second it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that clears half of our agenda. Now, we're going to move to item number seventeen. Um, this was a item, a petition of Gary Wiggins on behalf of Highlands Park Commercial LLC for a master plan amendment of nine point eight acres of property for the Highlands Park Godley Station PD located at one forty-three, one forty-nine, and one fifty-five Shell Bark Way to establish a multifamily residential land use in Alderman District One. If you remember, council heard this before. Council passed it. Um, I issued a veto regarding this item. Um, we've decided to allow reconsideration of this item, uh, to allow public comment. And so, Mr. Amor, if you would, a brief presentation since council has heard this before, uh, and then we will allow public comment. Uh, depending on the number of, of comments as it relates to this, uh, it's only three. So I'll allow two minutes, uh, for, uh, public comment on this, and then we will move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Uh, pleasure to see you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, I will, as always, do my best to be brief. Um, but just remind everyone that this is, I guess, coming back at noon. So all of my original slides are here. I will attempt to truncate for you all. Uh, this is a petition, uh, and a PD with a great deal of history. It was originally established back in nineteen ninety-six. Uh, and when this came in, this particular tract was indicated for multifamily residential use. Uh, and so what ultimately happened was that through a series of amendments to the PD master plan, this ended up having, uh, its own specific master plan that was institutional and office-related. Uh, four revisions later, we are now being asked to consider apartments here. So through its evolution, we have seen the approval of both multifamily residential uses and commercial uses potentially on this parcel. Uh, at present, again, this is designated for commercial use. Uh, and this is, um, in accordance with what the neighbors would like to see out here. They're interested in seeing convenience, commercial uses, so that they don't have to travel as far down to Pooler Parkway in order to reach those. Uh, so to speak about the specific request, this is a nine point eight acre tract uh, that is, again, presently designated for commercial. The developer is requesting to develop at a density of about twenty-three dwelling units per acre consistent with the standards in the RMF two zoning district. Uh, again, with essentially an RMF two twenty-three designation, but within a pud. So, uh, that is the specific request. There are, uh, up to two hundred and twenty-five dwelling units in apartment form that we would expect on this parcel. Again, this is kind of the evolution. On the left-hand side of your screen, you can see on that map, uh, when the Godley Station PD was adopted, it came in designated as multifamily. Uh, we are currently at iteration three, which if you can see my, there it is. Uh, right here, we're iteration three. Uh, and the iteration number four that has the pink, uh, location there is what you're being asked to consider today. So, uh, again, we've seen both of these uses on this tract. There was a similar request to place apartments here that was considered back in twenty fifteen uh, by this, uh, sorry, by the MPC and was approved. Uh, and today, because we are so close to that maximum threshold that was established with the Godley Station PD, which was about five hundred and seven acres dedicated to multifamily residential. With this, uh, MPC staff did ask the developer to come up with sort of a reconciliation of all the multifamily to ensure that we were not exceeding the threshold that was, uh, established for multifamily within this PD. The number that was returned to us was four hundred and three point three three acres. Uh, through several meetings with the neighborhood, we also got some additional assistance from the Highlands Park neighbors. Uh, they identified some that were not identified. It came up to still less than the five hundred plus acres that were originally approved. Uh, and so with that, staff did find that this, uh, was likely appropriate, but that future amendments of this nature should not be considered. Uh, but the MPC, in hearing, uh, all of the concerns from the neighbors and a thorough discussion of the traffic, um, impacts that are anticipated in addition to the negative state of the traffic in this area already, uh, the MPC did decide to recommend denial of this request. And so the petitioner has chosen to bring this forward. Uh, just in understanding staff's thinking on this, uh, it is less likely about appropriateness than it is about the adequacy of facilities at this time. Uh, and so the MPC recommended that we look into specifically what transportation improvements were anticipated in association with this. And so in digging some of that up, we can see that Benton Boulevard and Highlands Boulevard have both been upgraded in their functional classification. And so these are thoroughfares that are now eligible to receive federal funds for future projects. Uh, there was an illustrated project that was included for this in the tip, even though it is not actually adopted into the tip. Um, and, uh, also, we also see that SPOSS eight includes this as a tier-one priority for the city. So everything that can essentially be done in order to alleviate these concerns uh, is being done, and it's really just a matter of timing. Um, I am happy to answer any questions you have. Uh, the MPC did recommend denial of this, and you're familiar with the outcome previously.
Thank you. This is a, a public hearing that I'm now declaring open. I don't know if the petitioner wants to, uh, speak now or, or wait till, uh, after the comments. It's up to you. I'll, I'll give you that opportunity. You can, you can have your time upfront, or you can have it at the end. Huh? Okay. All right. So then this is a public hearing that we, ma'am, what's wrong? Well, um, we have cards here. Did you fill out a card? Okay, go ahead and fill out a card. Okay. All right. So I have Emmanuel Zamudo, Shannon Brown, and Julie Ratchford in that order. You have two minutes, uh, from the moment, uh, you get up to the podium and you, uh, give your name. Mr. Scherehouse, if you would, drop the computer maybe. Oh, thank you. Um, two minutes from the point at which you, uh, give your, your name, the clerk will be, uh, timing you, and we'll go from there, okay? All right.
My name is Emmanuel Zamudio. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to be here, you know, be part of this occasion of return to City Hall. Our area has seen unprecedented growth. Uh, as the years have gone by, I've seen businesses, homes, and apartments come up at an amazing rate, and for that reason, um, this, the reason that I'm here today. I'm against the unchecked growth that threatens our community. Um, the, um, the developer, at the request of Mr. Moro, did talk to the community to get our input for things that we would like to see, um, instead of an apartment. The community gave our inputs and ideas of like, these are the things that we would like to see, that we would, um, help support for commerce, um, to help Mr., to help the developer get something on his land and, you know, make money. We gave our input to that, and the, what we're given in return was to be ignored. Once at MPC, when our requests were completely unheard, and again, several weeks back, uh, here at City Council. What I would like to say is that I would like for my voice and the voice of our neighbors to be heard. Last time, we were not here because we thought our voice was being represented. We are here now to say, we do not want this unchecked growth. We want something that our community, um, can live with, that we can grow into, and that we can support. These apartments will not support that. And just because something can be done, doesn't mean it should be done. That is it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Shannon Brown?
Hello. My name is Shannon Brown. I'm a resident and a director for the board for the Waverly HOA, which is a subdivision on Highlands Boulevard. And I know there's probably a lot of people who are gonna complain about the traffic today, but I would like to emphasize one of the ways that the population density is negatively affecting our children. Uh, for instance, yesterday, the kids from the Waverly subdivision were thirty minutes late to school because their bus was running behind schedule. And we live only one point one miles from the school. On the average day, our kids arrive to school at seven twenty-eight AM. This is two minutes before the instructional bell rings, which means that our kids and hundreds of other Godley Station students have to take the breakfast that they're provided to their classrooms and eat at their desk. So you might be thinking, one point one miles, why don't you just let your kids walk to school? Well, years ago, my kids did walk to school. But now it's not safe for them to walk to school. Not only is the traffic a severe hazard as drivers become more and more aggressive so that they are not late to work. The number of residents increase, and so do the sex offenders. My kids cannot walk to school without being exposed to at least three sex offenders. The school bus is the only option. We need more schools. We need more safe community parks. We need better drainage.
Thank you.
We don't need more apartments.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Ratchford?
Hi, and thank you. Um, my name is Julie Ratchford. I'm the Community Association Manager for two subdivisions in the Highlands. So I manage Willow Point and Waverly. Um, I have been inundated with emails and phone calls from owners in each community. In Willow Point, there's over three hundred homes. Um, in Waverly, there's over a hundred and seventy. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of homeowners. As their Community Association Manager, um, you know, a lot of different owners have reached out to me. Several have asked that I share their thoughts. So, um, from Carl Nielsen, he says, "The basics of why I believe this is a horrible idea and why I am against it, our current infrastructure surrounding the Highlands as it pertains to traffic specifically is already wildly overtaxed. During peak traffic hours, the roads are backed up, and it has taken me, in the most extreme of conditions, forty-five minutes to leave my house in the Highlands and make it to I ninety-five off of Jimmy Deloach. During non-traffic times, it's approximately a six-minute commute. Additionally, about half of Effingham currently uses the Benton Extension to Highlands Boulevard, therefore increasing the traffic even more. At this current point in time, road expansion must happen before we add more family occupation into such a small area." I was also asked to share feedback from Andrew Wing, a resident at Willow Point. Um, and he said that he would like to relay that the housing in the Highlands is already expanding significantly with the addition of townhomes and final phases of housing being currently completed. These developments are not even occupied yet, meaning that the growth of traffic in the Highlands and surrounding area has not even experienced the additional capacity which it will in the near future. It is overwhelmingly clear that residents of the Highlands and surrounding areas do not want additional apartments being developed at this time. And Michelle Ellison, also a resident at Willow Point, says, "I am a resident and homeowner of the Highlands."
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, area in Savannah and have lived here since, oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
But the school buses, that's the main thing.
Thank you. Is it Barry Gillison or Ellison? Am I pronouncing it wrongs?
Yes, sir.
Is it Gillison?
Ellingson.
Ellison. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Barry Ellingson. I live at Willow Point. I moved to Savannah seven years ago from Seattle, Washington, and I moved to the Highlands. It was a beautiful community. All cities grow. All tax bases must increase. However, in the seven, going on eight years that I have been here, the high line has multiplied by ten to fifteen-fold. You've had several examples. My area alone, three hundred and fifty houses are now in Willow Point. There are multiple townhouses that have not even been finished, and the construction grows. Your transportation out there cannot increase. There's no way. We are compounding a problem. Please, the residents of the Highlands, beg you, do not approve this until vast improvements can be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosanna Horton is here. She has a question. I mean, but you can form it as a statement that could be addressed at some point. Okay.
Certainly. My name is Dr. Rosanna Horton. I'm a citizen here in Savannah. I would like it that each time developers come and speak, that they talk to what percentage of any kind of housing will be for those who need affordable housing. I did not hear a percentage. I would like it such that everybody who considers building any housing, especially when it comes to large apartment complexes, those generally leave out people who need affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just so, uh, Dr. Horton, affordable housing for us is housing at all levels. Um, it's housing that a person can afford, so generally, but now, I, I get your point. All right, thank you. Does anyone have any other comments regarding this? Okay, um, please, sir? Mr. Wiggins?
Mayor and Council, uh, Gary Wiggins. This property originally was a hundred and sixteen acres of, uh, multifamily. Um, it was purchased years ago by another developer, developed as an industrial office park that didn't work. I purchased it in two thousand fourteen, and I asked the question, what do the residents out there want? They wanted public services, public open space, retail, and so they didn't have to go to Pooler. So I went to work, and two thousand fifteen, I got the master plan approved to add retail. And then, um, I went from there. It took me almost three years to trade twenty acres, which could have been apartments, could have been anything, with the city for a, a park, for a public park. From then on, two thousand fifteen, I've been marketing that retail commercial, and I can't get anything done with it. Can't sell it. So, um, I decided I'm gonna build it myself. But it's gonna need support, and this will allow me to do that. Along with that, I've also, uh, met with, um, the city staff, and, uh, I've obligated myself to try to start that park, that twenty-acre park, at least get five acres there for some public open space to allow the residents to have their kids another place to run around. Um, along with that, I'm gonna try to help anything I can to try to get more done than just that. But for now, I think it's a, it's a good start, and it allows the community, um, some more, allow them retail, have a shovel-ready project. And five acres at least of, of open park, I think, is a good start out there. And they will keep the residents from having to drive to Pooler for a lot of your basic services. I don't know. I, I've told this story before several times. I just, I don't know. Any, any questions or?
Thank you very much. Thank you. You have a question for him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, why, why don't we, why don't we close the public hearing, then you can?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we move to close the public hearing.
Second motion.
Probably move to second it. We close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alderman, um, Miller Blackley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Wiggins, did I hear you say that you were donating twenty acres for public space?
But I traded with the city back in two thousand. Took almost three years to do that back in two thousand eighteen. Um, so there's a twenty acre, there's twenty acres reserved out there that could have been developed, that now is city property for a public park. So there's been master plans done on it, the city has. So what I wanted to do, it hasn't been funded. So what I wanted to do is get out there, and I'm willing to pay for the first five acres and come up with something passive. Like I said, I've already met with, with city staff. They all seem to like the idea. Um, and it won't inhibit the future plans of the city to build out the rest of the park. But it gives, it's a start.
And you also said that you're doing retail out there as well?
Twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet of retail. Yeah, that, we're gonna have to subsidize. Part of the reason why we're asking for this. Because, again, I've been marketing this property since two thousand fifteen. And so we decided we're gonna build it out ourselves.
Okay, so I heard the residents say they did not want to travel from the Highlands area all the way to Pooler, and you? and you're about to put, now make, let me make sure I'm saying this right. You're about to put what they want there so that they don't have, okay, thank you.
And I've sent, I've actually worked, I've sent specific targeted retail, asked for their input, what they want in that retail center. I have some good ideas. I want it diversified. I wanted to give them a chance to do anything they can not to drive to Poole. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to, I'm trying to stick with my original plan from 2014.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for council?
I have a statement.
Yes, Aldwin Millenair.
No, I didn't have a question. I just had a statement. We closed the hearing, right?
Yeah, we're closed. Any comments from council members? Aldwin Millenair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of conversations about this issue, a lot of press. I've gotten a lot of bad press and you have to have thick skin in this position. But I'm going to read my statement in the essence of time. Upon my election to represent the Highlands in 2020, it stood out as the most recent area that had been annexed into the first district. It was evident that prior design and planning efforts had not fully anticipated the requirements of its residents. The neighborhood was underserved with only one municipal facility, a fire and emergency station established under former Mayor Eddie Deloche, and even this was not enough to meet the area's requirements. One tragic incident where a child drowned due to confusion over addresses and the location of an emergency underscored the lack of adequate infrastructure and services. To adequately assess the needs of the Highlands, I committed to a thorough evaluation. This involved surveying the area, driving through the neighborhoods and speaking directly with dozens, if not hundreds, of residents, including port workers, longshore employees and members of the faith-based communities. I attended the community meetings both before and after my election, ensuring I was in touch with the lived experiences and concerns of those I served. Two of the most pressing issues that emerged were the dangers posed by the heavy truck traffic along Benton Boulevard and industrial tracks Alpha Track and the C-17 track. Residents were deeply troubled by the persistent industrial zoning, proposed warehousing and the increased truck traffic that these developments would bring. There was strong opposition to further industrial expansion and I shared that opposition, understanding that no one wants industrial facilities at the interest to their community. Additionally, traffic calming was in urgent need. Improving ingress and egress to the neighborhood was challenging and frequently cited as a top concern. Recreational amenities were also sorely lacking. While there had been a phased fan for recreation development, it had never been funded as developers had focused solely on housing with little thought for parks or playgrounds. This was particularly troubling in a community with so many children. As a result of these assessments and ongoing advocacy, I began working with city management to secure further, to secure funding for recreation. The first success was phase one of a recreation plan which resulted in the trail area now enjoyed by residents. I have continued to push for community engagement and planning future phases, advocating for amenities that reflect current needs such as a basketball court, especially after a rise in youth trouble last summer and additional playgrounds. There are even two 5-acre tracks on Highland Boulevard that have been committed to recreational use for the Highlands, providing hope that the area's needs will continue to be addressed through active resident engagement and responsive governance. Residents also desired to have retail amenities that were compatible with the needs of the community that were closer to them than the drive they had to make to Poole to acquire needed retail items. There was a track of land at Benton and Highlands that would be perfect for retail, which was discussed in several meetings that the residents supported. Previously, the PUD property was zoned for office use, which has been changed back to PUD, allowing planned development for the much-needed and desired retail and apartment housing, therefore rooftops to substantiate the retail, which will help with the retail. So the current owner and petitioner, Mr. Wiggins and I have had several conversations. He understands my desire for developers to provide community benefits when they come into these areas in close proximity to residential properties. This petitioner has agreed to do just that. He has agreed to work with the community and staff to assist with the desire for soccer fields and possibly basketball courts, which will be worked out in a resident-driven manner with staff assistance. This is currently on the table. This is what the residents wanted, traffic calming, trucks off the road, retail establishment, recreational amenities and a police precinct. I have been able to work with staff to acquire the first phase of the long-held recreation plan. I have been working with staff to secure compatible zoning for retail and I've been able to work with staff to ensure that the road is a tier-one SLOSS project and is built out to its full facility. This developer is now bringing retail and housing. The Alpha Track and the C-17 Track have been settled as to what will come there. Therefore, we've made tremendous progress with my leadership despite the politics. The only thing that I am not going to be able to deliver is the police precinct. That Northwest precinct on West Bay Street needs a home. My recommendation is for the Northwest precinct to go into the Highlands still, but it's going to go on Gwinnett Street in the Adams Complex, less than a mile and a half from the Central precincts. This is the status of the big picture, understanding and supporting the big picture of all the amenities that I have managing. I really thank my ILA brothers and sisters. We have about 30 or 40 that lives in the Highlands. And so actually, they are getting everything that they want except for the precinct and the residents in the urban greater West End can't even get a ditch clean. So thank you. Highlands, you're coming up. Congratulations. The thing is, it's not, I don't think they are against what's coming, it's just the order in which it's coming. But the good news is staff have been able to make the road situation that is a major concern to help with that traffic a tier-one, that means it will get priority, consideration if and when the SLOSS pass in November. So this is a great problem to have. We have groin pains. There's a lot of problems. But everything that the Highlands have requested since I got elected, we're delivering that. Except for a precinct and management is working on some public safety solutions for the Highlands. So it's like, we want it, but we don't want it yet. We don't want it now. And right now, we have an opportunity to have it all on the table and that's why I was in support of this petition that you're bringing before. So thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let me give a little history and then talk about the reason why I vetoed this. And it has really nothing to do much with you, Mr. Wiggins. So I want you to know that. I've represented this area for quite some time. I remember the years that it just sat very, very empty. And then one day, the tipping point came and it started to grow and grow and grow. And people found the opportunity where they could live in the greatest city on earth in a way that gave a different experience than people who live in what they've called mainland Savannah, so to speak. The Highlands is about 23 miles from City Hall. And it was very attractive for people who worked in South Carolina, very attractive for people on the west side of town. Now we know very attractive for those working at Hyundai or Gulfstream, the airport, because you're literally right there. And it grew and it continued to grow. The plan now was different than what the plan was initially. The market kind of changed all of those things. And I will, I will be absolutely honest with you. I mean, I think you, you know, you tried to do all you could do in the space of what you had to be able to work with. But in that growth, we could not keep up with the growth. The school was out there. The school became overcrowded quickly. People were still coming from all over the world, coming, becoming Savanians, living in this great, great community of many, many different subdivisions, houses and apartments. Then one day, Effingham County showed up with Chatham County and they put a bypass that dropped off literally at the mouth of their neighborhood that we could not do anything about. At the time, I worked with staff and we put in a truck van to stop lost trucks from coming through the community. If you live in the Highlands, you know that it takes a good 30 to 45 minutes to get out of the Highlands. And sometimes when you're trying to get home, it's 30 to 45 minutes to get back in the Highlands. And I think we would all say that is absolutely unreasonable and certainly unfair. The council had a presentation and I think the council relied on the testimony that was given, that we relied on to believe that although there was opposition at MPC, that the issues were worked out between MPC and city council. And so council voted, I believe unanimously, to approve it. We found out quite quickly, I believe we all have, that that was not the case. That the views of, I think the vast majority of individuals in the Highlands was misrepresented. And so I used my authority as mayor to issue the first veto in 30 years to create an opportunity to give council a second wind at looking at this and then making a decision. The idea of this, again, you, I think you've done what you could do. I mean, you know, you have to put there what works. I think you tried the commercial and the fact was is at one point they're saying they want commercial, but the reality is, is that you're too close to all of the other development in Poole to really have something that's going to be able to work. So, you know, from a financial perspective, the apartments would work. I mean, you know, I think that's probably your best bet at this time. The problem is, for me, is that these folks are still taking 30 to 45 minutes to get out of their house. My concern was, was that, and folks know, I insisted that Benton and Highlands widening would become the top-tier issue on the T-SLOSS agenda. And it failed. It failed. And we had members of our council against T-SLOSS, but it failed, all right? It failed countywide and we're doing this again. And again, I absolutely insisted and manager will tell you that in our conversations with Chatham County, I was very clear that I would not support SLOSS if Benton and the Highlands Boulevard was not the top-tier issue. And we were successful in making that happen. So if it passes, great. You know, we have some money into it. This will give us some more money. We have money in design already. We're waiting for money for construction. That's great. The problem is, is if it doesn't pass. And then these apartments are here and now we have taken a bad situation and have already, we've made it worse. I'm not saying for me that to use that land and that purpose is not the most financially efficient way for you to do it. I believe that it is, given what you've tried. But given the unknown about what happens in November, I could not support allowing us to pour more density into an area in which we have not been able to relieve the other issues that you don't control. The voters control that. And unfortunately, it's not just the voters of the Highlands. It's the voters of the eight municipalities and unincorporated Chatham County that will decide whether SLOSS works or not. And so I couldn't do that to those folks. I couldn't do it. And so, you know, I feel for you because I think you sent me a letter and I agree with you. I mean, you did, you did everything right. You're going through the process. But for me and my good conscience, I could not allow this to go forth on this end without having some real assurances about what's going to happen on our end. I recognize it'll take you quite some time to get that project up and going. But we also have to know what's going to happen with that growth because I think you would agree. Even if you build apartments there and nothing changes, it's going to be a disaster there. And I appreciate you, in terms of working with the community, I appreciate the fact of the donation or the swapping of the land. I appreciate your willingness to work with us to develop it. But I think that we have to, as the elected city representatives, make sure that those individuals in the Highlands are properly taken care of as they continue to grow. So this is an opportunity for council to be able to vote on that. I'd be honest with you, if it passes, I'll probably veto it again because we have to be able to catch up. We have to catch up.
I'd like to say a couple of things. I think, you know, in general, the thesis behind the engineering of...
You got a great engineer. He's a great engineer.
Commercial to...
Can't afford him, but he's a great engineer.
Commercial to, I'll plead the fifth on that one. From commercial to residential typically trips or less. I think also, this project allows me to build 22,500 square feet of retail, which will take local traffic off Benton Boulevard trying to get them back and forth to Poole for any service at all. There's no service out there, none. So I think if you look at the combination, I think I see it as a net benefit for the community. Between the engineering says and then what, local trip, like local trips are just going to have to go right there instead of going down and getting stuck in Benton Boulevard.
But what do you say to the school bus that's waiting to get home? What do you say to the parent that's had a long day and they're waiting in traffic? I think, you know, for me, I would feel a lot better if the SLOSS had passed and we knew we were moving forward. But again, my fear about how things work, I thought T-SLOSS would have passed and it did. If it was just the city of Savannah, especially a little while, I would gamble that it would pass. But, you know, with everybody else involved, I just don't know. And so my fear is, is that, you know, if this happens, this moves on. But these folks in the Highlands continue to be literally trapped in their neighborhoods for an enormous amount of times. And so I'm just, I'm really concerned for it. But we have some comments, anybody?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, it is live. The microphones are working. I just wanted to weigh in on a larger perspective issue. Of course, it's not my district, right? But we weigh in on things that impact us citywide. And the number one thing that we have talked about for years, campaigned on and platformed on is the housing crisis. It is the housing crisis across the board. And I know I've endured projects in my district where I've, I've been told that there's going to be inconveniences, but we do it for the greater good. And I think every district across this city, and I do have to say, I have never seen a proposal with such a great community benefits agreement for the community with public lands, the retail that they ask for. The fact of the matter is, you need enough rooftops to support the commercial entities that you want. And we know, we, all of us earned our five-year service pins. We know that commercial-driven activities generate the most traffic. If you want to protect the neighborhoods, I know it seems counterintuitive. You might say, "I'm not, I don't want people building houses and townhomes near me." It is the lowest traffic generator out there outside of passive land. It's not realistic for us to say that someone, the tooth fairy will come along and purchase the land and donate it. Maybe that will happen. I'll play the power ball and we'll do our best. But for the proposals that are in front of us, we have to take a look at the myriad of factors to determine the totality of the circumstances that shows the best course of action for our community. In its mixed use, its multifamily, its retail options, its community benefits. There are no perfect proposals out there. And I understand, we are dealing with mega-traffic impacts. I'm getting now the complaints all the time. But that rising tide does lift all boats. So I applaud and appreciate the effort that was into, put into this agreement. I know that for any project of this scale, not everyone's going to be happy. But from what I see on the table here, this is as good as it gets when it comes to a multifamily, mixed-use proposal of this size and scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Aldwin Bell.
Just in addition to what Aldwin Columbo has said, not only, I don't think anybody on this council can sit here and not realize that we have a housing crisis in this community. And many of us probably campaigned on addressing that. And to turn a deaf ear on a plan that is reasonable, that is really resting on the approval, the success of it is resting on the approval of SLOSS aid in November, we recognize that we can't predict what will happen in November, but we have no reason to believe that SLOSS, this upcoming SLOSS will not pass when all the others have over the past several years. And it's a tier-one project, so that means it will be done first. So I, in good conscience, I just can't turn a deaf ear to this.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. I'm going to stand on protecting communities. I have been told, Mr. Collins, and I believe that he's just the greatest of what he does. But I want people to understand when we have these type of things, and when you said you make an agreement, if so many people, if you're saying that this is such a great agreement because we have these agreements in all the district, where are those people who are saying that they want this agreement? For one thing. And the other thing is, in council, we made this pact and it... And the other thing is, in council, we made this pact, and it should be that way, that we go along with the sitting councilperson who drives this stuff. That has not happened, especially in my case. I want to be able to say that if it's against any of my principles of why I got elected, and if it's going to change the quality of life wherever you are, then I won't be voting for that. It's, it's, and I don't know how you take that and how you receive that, because there's a lot of things going on in all of these districts, right? And we want to be able to say that we're taking care of our districts. I don't sign on anything unless I beat it up with my districts. And so, the only thing that we can go by is what that councilperson tells us. And I want that councilperson on the record, if she wants us to stay out of her district, then I want her to stay out of mine. But if it's something that's going to be impactful for everybody, then I'm voting on the side of the people that is, is going to, to, to immensely, immensely create a problem from them. All of those things that you're going to say that you said was part of the agreement, I want to make sure that it's part of the, the majority of the people who actually have to live there and not the people who are coming to shop there, because it's important that we take care of everybody at the same time. So, we have to make sure that we take care of people who own businesses, but I'm going for the people who actually live there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask our city manager, uh, to weigh in on this, and I need to hear your voice publicly...
Yes.
...on this, uh, because I do trust, uh, your, your leadership, uh, city manager and, uh, and your staff, uh, as you bring recommendations to us as mayor and council.
I thank you, Mayor Protim, certainly. Um, I recommended that the mayor and council approve MPC's recommendation of denying. When this came before council previously, um, I think it's, again, agree with MPC's staff assessment that this is a adequate facilities issue, not an appropriateness issue. I think that multifamily housing is very appropriate. I think commercial is very appropriate. I think we're talking about building out the utility of the road network, um, along Highlands and Benton Boulevard to help facilitate, um, the, the traffic and transportation in the area. Um, you, council asked me at the time, I believe the mayor asked me at the time, uh, you know, could I live with it? Um, my answer was, you know, I don't live in the Highlands, so I don't have to live with it, um, but that, generally speaking, you know, we understand that the Benton and the Bull, the Benton and Highland Boulevard, uh, road network, um, build-out, um, is, is gaining steam. Uh, it, you know, we do not yet have secured construction funding for that, um, but we've taken every step. We've got, um, commitments from GDOT on what that local split would be.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm Joseph Layden, I'm, uh, the owner of Spooky Savannah Ghost Tours, um, welcome tour, not a horse tour, but I'd like to offer a practical, low-cost alternative for those times when horses can't work, a genuine horse-drawn style carriage, but fully electric. These electric horse carriages maintain the look, romance, and tradition of what visitors expect, but they remove the animal welfare issue entirely. It meets all low-speed vehicle requirements, it's whisper-quiet, it produces zero emissions, and can operate year-round regardless of heat. And importantly, this isn't meant to replace Savannah's beloved horse-drawn tours, it's just an alternative for those days when it's too hot. Um, right now, the electric horse carriages aren't recognized under the Tour Services for Hire ordinance. Updating that language is a simple step and one that would allow Savannah to lead the way in humane historic tourism. Philadelphia, Fernandina Beach, and Atlanta are already using these, and the same, um, designated as a horse carriage and customs, but they are electric.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Paris Flaus, Jason, get ready next.
Hi.
And you, you might want to, it, it, it moves. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, my name is Paris, and I'm an employee of Carriage Tours of Savannah. Um, I would just like to say that banning these horse carriages would not protect these horses in any way, shape, or form. Um, these horses have been with us for generations, and if they do not have a job, they are not going to prosper very well. I would just like to say, we, they do get their proper care, water, feed, anything that they need, and banning them and taking them from their job will not help them in any way. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Jason?
Uh, all right. Uh, hi there, council. Uh, currently, tourism is hurting. Um, anything that continues to target our tourism industry is, I don't think necessary. I think the current legislation should be maintained. Uh, I think I have no better stewards of our culture, our historic preservation of these horses than these folks here, who love their animals, who love their business and being able to take these animals out and to share them with the tourists that come. Um, actually, right here in the chamber, there is a cute little carriage, a little horse-drawn carriage over there, made of silver from, uh, Jakarta in Indonesia, and it says, "It recognizes a shared commitment to historic preservation and culture," and I think these horses are very much a part of that culture, and I can think of no better stewards than these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanne Davis, and then Gary Sessons.
Hi.
Hi.
I grew up on a farm in my fifty-eight years of life. I'm a retired teacher. I've worked animal rescue organizations in the Middle East and across the country in the U.S. I now work with Carriage Tours Savannah gleefully and with peace in my heart. I'm the one who cares for those horses out on the street. I water, I temperature check, I maintain their safety and health. I invite anyone to work a day in my shoes, to see how truly well we care for our animals. Our owner says, "Horses first, customers second," and she means it. She has never failed to pull in the horses long before the currently mandated temperature checks. Those aren't, that's not seen. Please look at it now. I've heard it said by your own alderman, "If it's too hot for us, it's too hot for the horses." Do you not see us, the drivers, the carriage workers, the city employees, the construction workers out there, working? Why is it only the horses we're concerned about? Why are you not setting temperature limits for your city workers, construction crews, and other, and other workers and tourists?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Sessons, Carrie Daughtry, get ready.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm Gary Sessons. I'm the co-owner of Savannah Carriage Tours. I, I've been in the horse industry for approximately twenty years during that time. I have volunteered at rescues, I have worked hurricanes, I've set up donation stations, all of which would not have happened without the carriage tours industry. Um, well, I lost my place. Uh, through all that, still driving a, a older, like, ten-year-old truck. I'm not sure why we're going through this again. At the original onset of it, we were promised that it was just a formality, that there was a new person in, uh, city government, and that all of this was just going to be kind of punching the buttons so that he could see how the process worked. Uh, nothing has changed but the pro, but the protesters' face, the faces of those guys. Uh, the science hasn't changed, the temperatures haven't changed, the horses haven't changed, none of that has changed except for the people who are protesting. Uh, I'm about out of time, so I would say, uh, you might want to consider a class on quid pro quo since, uh, we were victims of that after the incident that happened in the square.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, is it Mason, Sarko, Sarko, we, I, I'm, excuse me, Mason, Virginia, Robin? Did I call your name already?
Carrie.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I called your name. Carrie Daughtry, right?
Mr. Mayor, maybe we should find out who told him that, because I'd like to know if we have a, a, a situation in good...
Well, that's something with the city manager. I looked over at the city manager and he didn't know what's going on.
Well, no, if it's an elected official or somebody else, I think we need to know that.
Well, we'll, we'll address that during, after we get finished with this. Um, Ms. Daughtry, then Mason, Virginia Parsons, Robin Lowe, Catherine Strickland.
Hi, my name is Carrie Darty, and I work for Savannah Carriage Tours. I've been there for almost three years. I love our city, I love our history, but most of our, I love our horses. We come in daily, we care for them, we feed them, we groom them, we know them, we know their likes, their dislikes, their spots they like to be scratched in. When it gets hot outside, we're not worried about the people on our carriage and whether they're sweating and waiting for him to cool off. That horse is our main priority. What is his temperature? What is his respiration? Do we have to put the hose on him? We, they are the star of the show, and without them, we couldn't be here doing these jobs. So, they are the most important thing, and I just want everybody to realize that, that they all have names, they all have likes, they all have dislikes, they like to be scratched here and there, and us, as the people that work for them, know those things. I go in on my days off just to spend time with them. Um, that's an industry that, that has always been here. Your picture that you got today, there was a horse and carriage on it. There's always been horses and carriages in Savannah. Just because there's cars and, and things have evolved, doesn't mean that we should take out things that have always been here.
All right. Thank you. Mason, okay?
Hi, my name is Mason, and I've been a driver for Carriage Tours of Savannah on and off since 2022. When starting this job over three years ago, I never expected to form such a love for the people and the horses that I work with. This startup is simply a college job for me and has led me to practically change my career path to work with animals. We are very serious in following the mandates put forth by the city. During this heat, I'll be lucky if during the daytime, I get two or three tours in. Sometimes during the nights, I only go out for one even. Because we follow the guidelines so well, we've had none suffered for heat exhaustion during these several months. As someone who has left and come back to this company, I see just how well my boss adjusts our procedures yearly and works with the city to continue making sure we operate safely for us and our horses. What we do now works. Everyone who opposes us has been invited to come to our barn to see what we do. They refuse to do so and then hide behind their keyboard, saying our facilities are not up to their standards. Just in the last week, we've answered phone calls from people who've gotten their information from an AI-generated image, claiming something that never happened. They are the ones who have the, have no plan for our horses when we get shut down or due to a revised heat ordinance.
Thank you very much. Virginia Parsons? Virginia?
Yes.
Okay, Virginia, then Robin, then Catherine, and then we'll move on.
I was a guide and the social media coordinator with Savannah Carriage Tours for just over two years, um, and I have a carriage tours of my own. Um, I want to get to a very direct point. Love is free, but care is not. There's no question that we love our horses, but the care that we offer them, um, things like stimulation, exercise, enrichment, nutrition, shelter, medical attention, these things require a, a flow of, of cash effectively. So, in the case that ordinances make it so that we can't run efficiently, we will not have the finances to continue the care that we give these horses already. Um, in that case, the horses will have to be sold off, one by one, and of course, we would do our best to be sure that they go to loving homes. However, there's no way to guarantee that. Uh, they may end up back in farm labor, heavy hauling, professional, um, in aggressively competitive sports like pulling. Um, if they're lucky, they will end up as loved carriage horses again.
Thank you very much. We have Robin.
Good afternoon, my name is Robin Lowe. I support the only humane option on the table, which is the eighty-five degree cap on carriage tours. I'm a District Two resident. The overwhelming scientific and veterinary consensus is clear, heat-related discomfort in horses begins in the high eighties, especially when combined with...